City Council in the city of Waverly in the great state of Iowa. This is Monday, October 6th. It is 7:00 and we are called to order. Would you join here for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Members of the council, the agenda has been prepared for you by the city clerk. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. Members of the council, you have in front of you an opportunity to approve the September 8th, 2025 Special Joint Meeting and Municipal Housing Commission Minutes, as well as the September 15th, 2025 Regular Meeting and the September 22nd, 2025 Study Session Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion out there?
I'll move to approve the September 8th, 2025 Special Joint Meeting with Municipal Housing Commission Minutes, September 15th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes, and the September 22nd, 2025 Study Session Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Thank you. We need a discussion? It's a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. We have a new guest councilperson who is invited by Councilperson Dranko, who is not able to be here tonight. So, welcome very much, Lindsey Beanerman. Could you say a couple of words to introduce yourself?
Sure. I work up at Orford College. I'm the Administrative Assistant to the Vice President of Student Life. I've lived in Waverly my whole life. My husband and I are both Waverly alum. We have two boys that are in 8th grade and in 4th grade, and I've also coached cheerleading at Waverly High School for 17 years, so, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
We'll now open a public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the second reading of Ordinance 1172, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of properties owned by MDM Partnership at the former Willow Lawn Mall and surrounding areas from S1 Shopping Center District to C2, a commercial district, and amending the Waverly zoning map as provided by this ordinance. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would rise to speak to this? I see no one rising. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, is there a motion?
Move to approve the second reading of the Ordinance 1172, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of properties owned by MDM Partnership at the former Willow Lawn Mall and surrounding area from S1 Shopping Center District to C2 Commercial District and amending the Waverly zoning map as provided by this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just appreciated Paige sending out a map that clarified which businesses were not involved in this, which are the two dental offices in Pizza Ranch.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, let's have a roll call vote.
Okay. Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. That takes us to a presentation of certificates of appreciation. The city council and mayor would like to recognize Ann Arnz for her two years of service on the Waverly Board of Adjustments, Mike Shear for his six years of service on the Waverly Municipal Airport Commission, Addison Coon for her one and a half years of service on the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission, and Ross Huggevold for his eight and a quarter year's service on the Waverly Library Board of Trustees. I've got certificates for you if you'd come forward and let me shake your hand. Okay, Ross. Thank you, sir.
He's gonna take a picture of every handshake. Every handshake gets a picture.
Thank you. Addison? Look at me, yep, there you go. Thank you, Addison. Mike, thank you very much. Well, trying to move so you don't, you know. Thank you so much for your service. All right. Thank you very much. It's just great that people volunteer and serve on these commissions. It just warms my heart. That brings us to item H, public comments for items not on the agenda. If you have something you want to talk to the council about which is not on the agenda, now is your time to rise to the microphone, identify yourself, and you'll be given five minutes to give your thoughts. Anyone rising to the mic? Mike Shear, please identify yourself and away we go.
I'm Mike Shear, and I don't need five minutes. I just want to-
Very few clergies say that and mean it.
Not tonight. I just want to say a word of appreciation for the tone that the mayor has been setting in the city, not only here but elsewhere. The mantra has been be kind, and I discovered that if I went online, I can find about 100 different shirts that say be kind. I almost bought one to wear tonight, but I didn't have $19 to throw at the internet. But I do appreciate the tone that has been set. I think that we're in a time in our country right now when it's pretty important to be setting a tone that is civil, and I think we don't always do that very well. And so, that's my comment, and I appreciate what the mayor has done, and I also think we're gonna miss you after the end of the year. You did pick a pretty good place to go. I spent 17 years in Minneapolis and liked it. I also like it here, or I would be in Minneapolis. So, that's it. I don't think that was five minutes.
1 minute, 18 seconds. Thank you very much, Mike. Thank you for your kind words. What, anyone else rise to speak today? Please identify yourself. You've got five minutes. You can speak, but remember, we can't answer you because you're not on the agenda.
I understand that. My name is Ann Platy. First of all, I want to thank my Lord in Jesus Christ for giving me the ability and the confidence to speak tonight. I would also like to thank our founding fathers who wrote the Constitution so that we, that our great country, has a set of rules to follow and uphold. I'm going to ask you questions that I want you to look into your soul, your heart, and your mind, and really ponder your answers to yourself. Question one, do you think it is important for an elected official of the city of Waverly to show compassion for another human being when that person has been assassinated? Or do you think it is okay to celebrate that person's death? Question two, do you think it is okay for an elected official of the city of Waverly to be able to call other people Nazis and racists when those citizens of this town or country do not agree with that person? Number three, do you think it shows good moral character for an elected official of the city of Waverly to spew lies and misinformation on social media pages against people they disagree with? Question four, do you think it's okay that an elected official of this council was overheard saying that businesses downtown are not hurting as badly as people are led to believe? Or do you think it may have been better for that councilperson to encourage the person they were talking to to support the businesses instead of criticizing the owners? Question five, are you consistent with all businesses in town with the same support that you have given Brent, the theater owner? I would like to discuss gun control. Banning guns doesn't help. Bad guys are still going to get guns, and all you are doing is keeping innocent people from protecting themselves. 88% of the shooters of recent events have made horrific statements beforehand. People need to report these statements that are red flags, that the shooters have some serious mental health problems. Guns are not able to fire themselves. The problems are not guns. It's the indoctrination. Kids are being taught in schools and on college campuses that hating conservatives is moral, that poison is what leads to violence, like the assassination of Charlie Kirk, police officers, and ICE agents. How can you preach about gun laws and violence, but you can celebrate the murder with a gun, which was in the case of Charlie Kirk, by hundreds of people in this country, by people in this state of Iowa, by people in the town of Waverly, and by even people in this room? Mental illness is the cause of gun violence. Some people think if a cop has to shoot a criminal, it's automatically the cop's fault. But if a criminal shoots a cop, they think it's the gun's fault and not the criminals. If you want to fix gun violence, mass incarcerate violent criminals and throw away the key. The man who slashed the throat of the young woman from Ukraine on the train in Charlotte had 13 prior arrests. His own mom said he was a violent offender. He should have been never allowed to walk the streets. All kinds of red flags, but the liberal judges failed to do their jobs. Are you going to ban knives as well as guns? A 20-something killed his parents with a hammer last month. Are you going to ban hammers? All of these individuals have a mental illness, obviously. A candidate in Virginia who is a Democrat is running for Attorney General, sent a text saying that he wanted to put two bullets in the heads of his opponent. He also wanted his children dead. He apologized for what he said, but he doesn't have the moral compass to drop out of the race. Now, I'm gonna talk about someone who did have a moral compass, Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk was not a racist, as he has been depicted by many on the left. He judged people by their character, no matter their color. He said it himself, we are all the same race, and he argued that point fiercely. He did us by reminding that America is the best and last hope on earth, but our way of life is unstable, our snapping when reality sets in. Once the unstable start believing that someone you disagree with is evil, violence against that person can seem like justice. We all have strong opinions, but you can't let yourself hate. Using terms such as Nazi and racist promotes hate. It is absolutely despicable behavior, and it says a lot of the characters of those who genuinely are happy that Charlie was killed.
Madam- Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
This council needs to do better.
Anyone else rise to speak? Please identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
Yep. Mike Lacoste, Waverly, Iowa. I was going to attend the September 22nd, 2025 Waverly City Council Meeting and voice my concerns about the recent negative comments made by Waverly City Councilman Warburg Math Professor Brian Burden. In regards to the Charlie Kirk assassination, but apparently in the public comments, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to an individual member. Sounds like censorship to me. What I find completely insulting is that Bergen's invitation to meet him at the local bar if anybody wants to discuss city council business further. You gotta be kidding me. Am I to understand that the mayor and the city council approved of this behavior? I thought this was what the city council meetings were for. If councilman was allowed to ramble on about the Second Amendment at the end of the meeting with no challenges from the public, the public can meet him at the bar to discuss this matter? That is unbelievable. Not the best message of being those representing the city. My beef is with the Waverly Councilman, Warburg Math Professor, and Councilman needs to take a long look at himself in the mirror when he uses the words racist. In regards to Charlie Kirk's assassination, Bergen's actions speak louder than words. The councilman's inflammatory comments regarding Charlie Kirk were totally out of line for the supposed leader of this community. His unethical conduct is a disgrace and embarrassment to the good people of this city in Waverly and Bremer County. Let's have a flashback to what Warburg College did to my niece Haley Cannon and her friend Emily Russell by censoring them for two years for making Turning Point USA, a conservative group, a chapter on the campus. With their determination, Warburg Senate finally voted 33 to 14 to approve Turning Point USA as a chapter on the campus, but as of late, I don't think they have a chapter, and hopefully that'll change. In regards to the councilman's comment on gunshot, on gun control at the end of the September 22nd city council meeting, we need more gun control laws. I'm left wondering if this is Bergen's personal feelings, or is this how the city council feels as well? Councilman needs to understand that guns don't kill people, people do. Taking my gun away isn't going to solve the problem of law-abiding citizens to protect themselves. The problem isn't more gun laws, it's our corrupt judicial system, such as catch-and-release BS. Maybe you need to talk to the criminals to voluntarily surrender their guns to you. Good luck with that narrative. Another thing to remember is most criminals don't own their guns they use when committing a crime. They steal those guns. Let's not forget the Second Amendment states, a well militia is necessary to secure a free state. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. In my opinion, the councilman doesn't represent the vast majority of the taxpayers, citizens in Waverly and Bremer County. If rhetoric like this continues, our country will even be more divided than it is now and potentially be more divided during the American Civil War. Is this what we want? Is this what we want our leaders to do? I think not, but there's an old expression, we get the leaders we deserve, and that's exactly what has happened here. If we, the people, don't stand up and let our voices be heard, I like to think that we, the people, deserve better leadership to protect our God-given rights and freedoms. I don't know how many of you can recall the assassination of President John F. Kennedy, but I can. I can recall no one saying a negative word about John F. Kennedy. The country is united in their laws, and John Kennedy was a political figure. This shows how far we have fallen as a nation and as a civilization. Remember George Floyd incident? Burning buildings, looting, crime out of control, race baiting was having a heyday, and it was all about defunding our police and law enforcement. Quite a contrast to the assassination of Charlie Kirk. There were peaceful visuals across the United States of America. Race wasn't an issue. It was about uniting we, the people. While councilman is entitled to his opinion and protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution to say whatever he feels, he needs to understand there can be consequences for his comments. When are the people gonna start voting for constitutional representation that understands the oath they took to represent we, the people?
Thank you, sir.
I think it would be a great idea for people-
Sir, your time has expired.
...to run elected office to be required to pass a test knowledge of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Sir, your time has expired. You've passed five minutes. Thank you very much for your comments.
You guys work for us.
Anyone else rise to speak tonight? I see none, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Council, you have in front of you 14 items. Can I have a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passed unanimously. We're now on to regular business. Resolution 25-131, a resolution approving change order number three for the Waverly Aquatic Center for a net increase amount of $18,584.13. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 25-131, a resolution approving change order number three for the Waverly Aquatic Center for an increased amount of $19,429.20 to install geotextile fabric and a decreased amount of $845.07 to remove the heaters and change the air conditioner to a heat pump in the mechanical room for a total net increase of $18,586.13 from Woodruff Construction.
Second.
Any discussion?
We saved money two meetings ago. The Aquatic Center-
The Aquatic Center gives and the Aquatic Center takes away.
So, the geotextile fabric is to hopefully prevent additional settling in areas they don't want to have affecting the concrete, the base of the pool, et cetera. It was called for in some areas, not all of it. Talking to Baker, they thought it would be more beneficial to do it in bigger areas than was initially anticipated, so that's why this is here. I can't disagree with the keeping settling, especially in a concrete pool, from happening, so I think it was a good move to make this work, and that's what these guys do, so I trust the decision.
Yeah, I would think so with the amount of water that they had to get out of there in order to-
Get fill material. I'll feel better knowing this was done, at least.
Anything else?
One quick note, looks like it should be $18,584.13 as opposed to $18,586.13.
Okay.
Oh, there it is, yep. Thank you. You look like you're ready to vote. Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item number two. This is Resolution 25-132, a resolution approving the budgeted purchase of a Land Pride AFM 4211, 11-foot, all-flex, batwing mower for the Parks Department. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-132, a resolution approving the budgeted purchase of a Land Pride AFM 4211, 11-foot, all-flex, batwing mower for the Parks Department from Dyke Implement of Waverly, Iowa for the amount of $14,799, including the trade-in of the Park's 2017 batwing mower.
Second. Any discussion?
It's just a cool name.
Isn't it a little late in the season? Are you gonna get any, going to get any use out of it?
So, we might just get a couple mowers in this time, but yeah, it's obviously just getting ready for next year.
Okay. Garrett, would you be offering councilmembers a chance to drive it a little bit, you know, just a few yards?
Well, you'd be driving the tractor that'll be pulling it.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion? Let's have this as a roll call vote, please.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
That's 6-0. That passed unanimously. Resolution 25-133, a resolution approving the amendment to the airport fixed base operator, that is FBO agreement, with Sweeter Aircraft Services Incorporated. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-133, a resolution approving the amendment to the airport fixed base operator FBO agreement with Sweeter Aircraft Services Incorporated.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just had a quick question. If I'm remembering correctly from the report we got a couple weeks ago, there is basically no, no demand for instruction or rental with our airport anymore, so that part makes sense to me. But as I'm looking through this, I don't see any reference to any changes in the compensation for the management services, or so are we taking away some responsibility, but we're not changing compensation, or that's just not included in here, or what?
Who knows the answer to that? Justin?
Yeah, there was no discussion on compensation changes during our Airport Commission meeting.
Would the people taking lessons, though? City's not paying for that. They would pay for their own lessons?
Correct, correct. These are people coming in looking to take instruction or flight lessons.
But I don't, was Irv doing that?
No.
So, he wasn't getting paid for-
He wasn't getting paid for that. So, all he would do is make sure that there was someone-
Available.
Available. And the problem is, there are very few instructors out there, so it's something that he can't guarantee, that there's a few instructors out there, and they kind of pick and choose where they want to go based on what's close to home and whatnot. And similar with the rentals, it's just, he doesn't have access to that, so.
So, am I understanding correctly that his prior contract basically said he had to provide that? It's become sort of untenable to be required to provide it?
Correct. I think a lot of it was due to the insurance costs as well. I mean, he had a plan that he had to provide, or he had insurance for this type of service that he no longer saw a need to have because it wasn't being utilized.
So, how much of his time actually was being spent doing those two purposes, those two jobs, do you think? And is it worth even changing the contract?
Well, as of late, there wasn't a whole lot, but I think it was, he was just trying to honor his contract and to keep that there. He was trying to get rid of that.
As long as the contract's in place, he would still provide the insurance, so in effect, he will be seeing a discount in how much he's spending, because he won't have the insurance on these things now, which is why the contract's being saved. We've talked about this a little bit, and there's some things that, you know, from a utility standpoint, if you could walk us through, Justin, what the city covers, what Sweeter covers, as far as this utility uses in general?
Yeah, this was, the contract's kind of interesting, because I think it's been in continuation over a couple of years or a couple of different contracts. Five-year contracts are kind of abnormal, so we discussed during our Airport Commission meetings, do a next contract, do a 30-month review or something like that, so it's part way through, you can take a look at it. But the city, they split the gas, basically heat out there as LP, they split it with Sweeter 50-50, and then the city pays for all utilities. So, that's including the building, his business, the hangars, any runway lights, all those items.
So, he's not paying for any electricity out there?
No.
Even though that shop is one that we built to accommodate this business and help him, you know, be successful with that business, which is a side business, we have no part of that?
No.
I think it's where some of the stuff we'd like to at least look at changing is, seems like we're taking a lot on for what we're getting out of that.
So, this contract goes through '28. Is that correct?
It's five-year. I think it was in December 18th to 23rd.
Yeah. Until June 30th, 2028. Okay.
Right.
So, you're talking about with the next contract that's signed, with regardless of who it is?
Correct.
Put in some sort of clause where you can review it?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, has the commission had some semblance of these kinds of discussions? Or does it just-
On the lines of compensation, no. There was really no discussion on compensation. It was basically what Irv was trying to get out of it and is reasoning.
And I want to make clear, I'm not doubting or anything. I think we're very fortunate to have the service that we've got out there, and obviously they've done a really good job of running it and building that business up. I just want us to be sensible.
But he does pay rent. He leases the hangar.
Right. Yeah.
Any other discussion, friends? You appear ready to vote. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to number four. Resolution 25-134, a resolution approving balance change order number two, approving pay request number nine, accepting the Rolling Prairie Bridge replacement project as complete, and approving pay request number 10 as the final payment to release the project retainage. Is there a motion?
I will move approval of, where am I? Resolution 25-134, a resolution approving balance change order number two for an increased amount of $24,208.85, approving pay request number nine- approving pay request number nine for the amount of $346.47 to Taylor Construction Incorporated, accepting the Rolling Prairie Bridge Replacements Project as complete, and approving pay request number 10 for the amount of $48,896.16 as the final payment to Taylor Construction Incorporated to release project retainage.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Other than it's great to have this project done.
There's a typo on the last page. It should be bridge, not bride replacements, which sounds a little creepy.
Anything else? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Jones.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
That's unanimous, taking us to number five. Resolution 25-135, a resolution approving a quote from Tetra Electric of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase and installation of an RRFB, that is Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon Pedestrian Crossing Signals on 20th Street Northwest at Third Avenue Northwest Intersection. Do I have a motion for blinky lights?
I would move approved Resolution 25-135, a resolution approving a quote from Tetra Electric of Waverly, Iowa for the purchase and installation of RRFB Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon Pedestrian Crossing Signals on 20th Street Northwest at Third Avenue Northwest Intersection for the cost of $13,750 plus $1,000 for concrete work completed by city employees for a total cost of $14,750.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I hope people will stop at it. I had a classmate killed at that intersection when I was in junior high, so hopefully people will pay attention to the blinky lights.
I think people have gotten better. That's my impression of the blinky lights on Fourth Street. I think that people are learning. Chief, do you have an opinion?
I have a lot of opinions.
Do you think people are obeying the blinky lights better?
They are slowly getting better, but there is still a lot of work to be done. I would agree with that.
I think pedestrians wait until there's no cars or until there is somebody who looks like they're slowing down before they go across. That's what I do.
I think more people are getting better, but I think there's some holdouts.
People just don't pay attention when they drive. That's the problem.
Well, I get frustrated when pedestrians don't press the button. I'm like, that was $15,000. Press the button. Let's use that thing.
I, I am totally in favor of this, but I do feel a little apprehension about compliance there simply because with the changes that we recently made also to the ramps. So forward from that, I worry that people are going to be so focused on trying to figure out what to do there that they're not going to pay attention to that intersection. So maybe we need a little more PR or something.
Any more discussion? We've got a motion and a second on the table. How about a roll call vote?
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to Resolution 25-136. This is a resolution approving the termination of current on-call general engineering services agreement with the McClure of Clive, Iowa, and approving notice to airport consultants announcing the solicitation of statements of qualifications and experience from airport consultants. Is there a motion out there?
I will move approval of Resolution 25-136, a resolution approving termination of current on-call general engineering services agreement with McClure of Clive, Iowa, and the notice of airport consultants announcing the solicitation of statements of qualifications and experience from airport consultants.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think it'd be helpful just to have explanation of how this will differ from how we've been using them.
Correct.
This is no different than what we've been doing. We're just ending the five-year on-call agreement. So basically, some airports do not do five-year on-call agreements. They just do project by project, go off RFQ and select a consultant. We're basically starting that process all over again. So we create a selection committee, and we'll bring it back to the Airport Commission, and they'll, they'll decide these factors once we get RFQs back in. So basically, it's just starting over from scratch. The previous consultants, although they did a good job in design, we had other issues along there, and they were chosen before I was the one managing these projects. And I think that was a big deciding factor in this change.
And our contract with them allows us to do that change without penalty?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Well, in that case, let's have a roll call vote.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to the reports from boards and commissions. You have two sets of documents in front of you, the golf course and calendar from Waverly Senior Center. Any questions or discussion? That brings James to staff updates.
I'm sure we have something.
October 13th through November 21st, Free Yard Waste Collection Days. Have it out to your curb on your regular garbage pickup days. If we miss it, you can give us a jingle up at Public Services and we'll get it picked up, but usually try to be on top of that. And also, October 13th, the alley between Second Street and Third Street Northeast will be starting replacement. Baker is going to start that, hopefully that day, pending good weather up to that point.
What was the end date on the yard waste?
November 21st.
21st.
All right, numbers for the community sharing gardens are in, and it looks like there was 12,476 pounds of produce that was collected this year. So thank you to Ron Lenth, who oversees that whole thing and all the volunteers that helped out this year and who have helped out in the past. Still a lot of food coming out of there, so they did a really good job. Pool is still going along fine. Pouring concrete for the pool floor. That started last week. Would have continued today, but everyone thought it was going to rain for a while, so I don't believe they poured anything today. They do plan on pouring Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday this week. So I'll be down there to grab some pictures and share those with you either at the next meeting or for sure, share them at the study session.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to city council comments. Councilperson Bergen.
I wanted to thank everyone who helped organize the Oktoberfest this past weekend. It was a rollicking good night. People who turned out and enjoyed it, and I was one of them. Hopefully you got a chance to see me in my later hosen. And anyone who would like to discuss city council business meeting, business, I will be af- I will be at the parhouse after this meeting.
Thank you. Councilperson Jones.
I appreciated hearing from the public tonight,[1589.22]